...Vision Commission for the City of Norwood. And I'll ask Council President Lake to call the roll.
I'm Mayor Williams.
Here.
Council President Lake here. Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Mr. Von De Haar.
Here.
Ms. Bowens.
Here.
Ms. Snyder.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the prior meeting's minutes. Those were emailed to you last week. Are there any changes, corrections that anyone has? If not, if we could have a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved. We have a couple items before we get to the report of the financial supervisor I'd just like to cover. Yesterday, I received a request from someone who wishes to address the commission. And we have that in our bylaws as a possibility. We have a large agenda today. We're going to cover our agenda first, but if time allows, we will permit there to be comment, and it'll be for no more than a three-minute period. And I'd like to ask if anybody would like to make comment. I put a sign-up sheet over on the table, and I'll work off that when we get to that point after working through our formal agenda. The second piece I want to bring up is a letter that has come to me as the Chair of the Commission from the Local Government Services Section of the Auditor of State's Office. And Norwood has seen this before, but I wanted to just brief you on it. It lays out the charges that the city is now incurring. If you'll recall, initially, when it went into financial emergency, the first 24 months, there was not a charge. But statutorily, these are in Section 11808B of the Ohio Revised Code. And so, the estimated charge for these services at this point is a not quite a, it's a 20-50% blend. So, the state appropriation will pick up $25,000. And that's for January 1st through December 31st. And the city is not anticipated to exceed $22,500. So, I wanted to let you know about this, and that it's authorized and approved by the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission. Is there any questions or comments on this? Why don't we, since it's going to be part of the plan, I think I will take a motion to accept. I'll move the acceptance of this letter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, okay. What can I move now to item four? And there's been a lot of work done in this, and I'm looking forward to hearing what our financial supervisors say. So, to Anna Mary Thomas and April Davis, you can walk us through.
Yes, so first, we will be looking at the financial reports that you have in front of you. And we'll start with the statement of cash position, not the, we'll do the recovery plan after we do the financial reports. So, Attachment A is the cash position report for February of 2019. That is their last reconciled month. We just finished March, so they're reconciling that. The general fund, as you'll see, has a positive $1.9 million balance. There are outstanding encumbrances that makes the encumbered balance negative. Now, they have encumbered or put outstanding purchase orders together for the entire year for utilities and other things. That's why there's such large outstanding encumbrances. The other two funds that are in the recovery plan, Fund 2 and 3, Street and State Highway, they do have a positive balance at the end of February 2019. The other fund I want to mention is the bottom of page 1 of 2, is Fund 50, the water. It is a deficit and has grown. We have a staff person right now doing some analysis over the fund. That has not been completed at this time. By the time we come back from the next commission meeting, we'll be able to tell you what that analysis has shown us. So, until that is done, we would prefer not to talk about it until we have all our facts, if that makes sense. Any questions about the cash position at this time? Attachment B, this is where we're looking at the revenues. Now, with the revenues and the expenditures, the recovery plan estimates that are being shown here are not from the updated recovery plan that was passed by council last week. This is from the March 2018 recovery plan, because the new updated plan is not in effect yet until the commission approves it. So, that's why we use the March 2018 recovery plan estimates, just so that we are aware upfront. That's why things look a little different. And then, it has the actual information through February of 2019. We're looking to see where they stand. It's two of 12 months. That's around 16.7%. They should be around that at this time. With the general fund, though, property taxes do not come in. First settlement doesn't come in until April. So, the overall percentage is going to be a little low for the general fund, because that large influx won't happen because of timing. You can look at the rest. Municipal income tax is right where it needs to be at this time of year, based on the old estimate. The other thing I wanted to point out on here for all funds is the investment income. That is the Star Ohio that the city started using, I think, around October, November. And that's an update that is based, put in the plan as well. And you'll see that originally, since that was new, there was no estimates, but you'll see that they have earned interest revenue. Any questions over revenues at this time for 2019?
I'm assuming that year-to-date should be, it says actual 2018. It should say 2019?
Any other questions over the revenues? Okay, so Attachment C, as I call it, is the expenditure side of the world. Again, that is the 2018 recovery plan for year 19, I should say, and then what they have spent to date. A lot of the ones that say exceeds are really one-time payments. We've talked about that in the past. They have a lot of memberships or software licenses or what have you that have to be paid in the first two months of the year. And so, those percentages look a little higher at this point. I'm going to go over just a few of them that aren't because of that, and they exceeds. If you'll turn to page 3 of 7, the EMS and the City Garage Department actually had debt payments due in the first two months. So, those payments were made. That throws the percentages off. The one for EMS was actually, it's a yearly debt payment, so that was all paid for the year. That's why that looks so high. The other one I'd like to point out, and it's an error on my part, is the parks and playgrounds at the bottom of this. When using the recovery plan from 2018 that was passed, there were recovery plan items to move street and water employees into the general fund. I have put the, when we moved those monies in from there, it's in the street section, and that should have been split between parks and playgrounds and street, because some of those individuals are parks and playgrounds. And I did not do that on the budget side of the world. That's why it looks over. That's an error on my part, so I apologize. Page 5 of 7, the real estate tax department, they made their payments on delinquent taxes plus special assessments that have to be made on all properties. They cannot waive out of the special assessment fees. And then, the very last page, we get in the street and state highway, 7 of 7. The amount's been in there for state highway is for salt. We're going to get into that in the recovery plan, but those items are going to be moved to the general fund, as that's now where it is going to be budgeted for. So, that will be a correction later. Any questions over the expenditures?
Just on the legal fees? And we're already at 100% for the year?
Yeah.
Do you think that'll continue to grow?
Yeah.
Is that related to the contract stuff?
That was taken into account when the recovery plan was updated as well. So, this is based on what the thought process was when the 2018 recovery plan was done.
Okay.
Any others? Attachment D is the reconciliation. That was performed by the City Treasurer's Office. The reconciling items are still being researched. That wasn't at the top of our list right now with the recovery plan and the water analysis, but we will get back to that as well. Any questions over this? Okay. And the last one is Attachment E. This is a lease agreement. We passed and approved, as well as council, to do a lease for printer and copiers. This is extending that to be able to give more to the auditor's office. There was an issue with one of the printers that does payroll checks, so it's a must-need. This agreement falls in line with that first millennial, and it will actually end around the same time. So, it's not like this one will go past a year of the original one that's been done citywide. This one will be ending at the same time.
Which is when?
Well, this is a four-year agreement, I believe, so... Yeah.
And what's the price? I didn't see any dollars on here.
Last page.
It's the last page.
Oh, my bad.
That's the last.
So, this complements the previous lease agreement we did?
Yes, it does.
Sorry, it what?
Complements the previous lease agreement. Okay. Are there any questions about that lease agreement? That is considered debt. Therefore, the commission needs to approve this lease.
Is it capital lease?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, for county purposes.
I'll move that we accept the lease as pursuant to the ordinance 6 of the Norwood City Council. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Brad. Why don't we take a roll call?
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Council President Lake, yes. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Von De Haar?
Yes.
Ms. Longenecker? I'm sorry.
Ms. Bowens?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
My apologies.
No, that's okay.
Well, and I will say, I, my apologies, because I had it sitting right here at the very front end of the meeting. I wanted to introduce Lauren Bowens to everyone. I think she didn't get to meet Mr. Shepherd, but...
I'm subbing for Marcy.
Yeah, she's the treasurer's designate today, so I, I'm sorry I didn't get that done.
Oh, that's okay.
For the meeting, but there we go. Okay, so we got the lease agreement, and we're through our current reports.
Great.
All right.
Okay, the second handout that was put together is the financial recovery plan update that was passed by council on March 27, 2019. I know that that has been dispersed to you all. I think you've had it for about a week. First of all, I want to commend the city council, the mayor, and especially the city auditor, Jim Stiff, for all the work that they put into this plan, and the countless hours that they not only worked on it, but talked to me, and we worked through issues and stuff. So, I want to thank them for that work. It looks like, you know, it's only, however many pages it is, 18, right? The amount of hours that it takes to do this, though, is a lot longer than you would think by looking at 18 pages. So, I wanted to thank them for that. Also, this plan has changed slightly some from the previous one that was done in March. And when I say that, I mean, some of the areas have been moved around, and we're going to talk about those. And then, there's been some additions. As you see, there's attachments to this plan as well going forward. I'm going to hit some of the highlights. Please ask me questions as we go along. One of the things I do want to point out, and I'll talk more about it later, is the Attachment B is the capital improvement planning worksheet that the city council is working on. This is still in draft form. They did pass this with this in draft form. They'll start working through, I think, some issues or concerns or what they really want to do. But the amounts that are in here for the years were really placed into the financial recovery plan.
So, they're in?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's part of the assumptions. This is something that we requested for them to do. The needs across the city in the capital improvements, whether it's small, big, this was really requested from our office to work on, and they really took this, and they went and looked to see what there were needs out there for the city. Not just, as we've talked about, the streets that need repaired or improved, but also other items across the city and other departments as well. And you'll see that in this plan that's talked about. We also asked for them to do prioritizations of low, medium, high, so they had a good understanding of what really needed to be done, and then looking to see when they could fit those items in to this plan. For them to come out, this is an item that they had to look at, because we can't, we can't accept them later on to present us a plan that does not look at those capital needs that have to be addressed for the city. Because if they're not in the plan, then how are they going to address them and move forward? Does that make sense? So, these are needs that definitely have to be addressed before they could even consider to become out of fiscal emergency. And we were able to do that this year. So, this was a lot of work as well, and I commend them for this as well. But it is still in draft form, okay? Okay, so with this, this is the city's intent for this financial recovery plan. The assumptions start on page 4, and they go through page 7, I believe. And then, you'll have the numbers, starting with the general fund, that go along with the written assumptions that we've talked about. I'm going to point out a couple of them. We'll start with the revenue side of the world first. The city had a evalu, oh yeah, sorry. This is the numbers here, the general fund. Starts on page 10. Page 10. Okay. Oh. I would have to write page numbers. And then, the assumptions are page 4. Okay. The big things, the city, well, the county, had a reappraisal, and in 2018, we saw an increase in property taxes from that reappraisal. The forecast is taking that amount from 2018 and being consistent and conservative for the entire five years, okay? Municipal income tax, that's another big item here. It's your biggest, largest revenue source in the general fund. You'll see that 2018 was $19 million, but the forecast is showing $18 million. At the end of December, or end of December, one of the companies here gave out large bonuses to their employees, which then increased the withholding tax for income for the city. Those are not something that we depend on or forecast going forward, because who knows if that will be the case in incoming years? So, if you take that piece out and then build in a 1% increase, we get to the 18.6. And this was actually provided to us by the city treasurer's office for all five years, and what the assumption would be. The other big area would be intergovernmental revenues. We've talked about this. In the past, they have gotten a SAFER grant, and in 2018, they got over $400,000 and some $1,000. There is no SAFER grant within the forecasted period. So, you will see a drop-off for intergovernmental revenues based upon that. Another area is the interest, investment income. As you can, we talked about, we saw the first interest coming in in 2018, and then, we have doubled that for 2019. That's a conservative estimate as well. That depends upon the interest rates, as well as the balances that are available to be placed within the bank of Star Ohio, which is where they have that now. Any other questions on the revenues that I did not go over?
Did that grant not get renewed, or is no longer in existence, or?
It's still in existence, but it's out there. It has a lot of working pieces and parts to it, and so, it's not been, it's not being explored at this time by the city. It also could cause them to increase their staffing levels as well.
So, the cost benefit wasn't worth it, I guess?
At this time.
Was there, I guess there was a study done of that?
Not that I'm aware of. But with past, there's been issues with the SAFER grant in the past, so at this time, they are not pursuing the SAFER grant.
So, how much was the grant last year? 400 grand?
Yeah, but that was for past years that they received. This, you're going to have to help me on this. Is it a reimbursable? Yeah, it's reimbursable. So, there are items that were reimbursed to the city from prior years.
How much per year, or, I mean, roughly?
Depending on the number of...
I mean, 100 a year, or, you say past years? Is it 10, is it 5?
You have to look, I don't know.
I was curious, why wouldn't we pursue it? I mean, is it, you said it's administrative burden and not having personnel?
Wait, I'd have to look at, she knows more about the grant agreement than I do. But there was a contingency, I believe, the city felt that you had to have X number, if I'm right remembering this correctly, of employees. So, right now, we're trying to get the personnel cost in line, so, you know, being tied to a grant that you have to have X amount really doesn't facilitate the city's position within the recovery plan.
Okay.
And those reimbursements, that large amount they got, those were, you know, due to the city on expenditures from prior years. So, it really skewed the revenues and the expenses, for that matter.
Any other questions on revenue?
Like last year, like fees and licenses and permits, that was like a, that's been a really high year, and we don't anticipate that being similar this year. It's the permits, if we looked at the permitting from year over year, is it consistent, or is it less?
The building department is in here for their fees. And last year was an anomaly year. It was large. The largest year that I've seen in three to four years. Probably if I went back further than that. So, that was taken into account and dropped down to be more in line with what past practice have been without that year. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Any other revenue questions? Okay, so the expenditure side. Okay, this has the most change in presentation. So, if you would actually go back first to page 15, there's this section called non-departmental. And you will see that most of those are zero going out in the forecasted period. Page 15 of the forecast. Okay. In parentheses, you will see that there is auditor, law director, auditor, auditor, lands and buildings and such. What has happened is, in the capital improvement plan, there is going to be a new software that's going to be updated, a new update to the software for accounting here this year, which is sorely needed. With that, we're able to move these non-departmental expenditures into departments that they really should be under, if you went to other municipalities. So, the parentheses is showing you where those expenditures are now showing during the forecasted period. That's why you are going to see some large increases in law department, the auditor, and especially the earnings tax, as that's where the refund and incentives are now going to be paid for the income tax, okay? So, we tried to make sure that with the parentheses, you could then go and see where they were moved into the departments within the forecasted period. That's one change. The other item, the personnel costs, is based upon Appendix A and the intent of the personnel, and it lists out how many they will be funding for the five years in the forecast for the general fund. Now, the water fund also pays for personnel services. Those are not included in here, so that is not a complete funding for all employees for the city. It would not include the water department, because it's not a part of the recovery plan.
This is an attachment, because I know, I see some of your, this is, there's an attachment at the back that shows the staffing levels.
This was approved with the recovery plan by council. Then, the Attachment B, which I already hit upon, is that capital plan. First, you have A, which is the personnel, and the levels to be funded. Then, B is the capital improvement plan worksheet.
Oh, here it is. Yeah.
And I'll get into more of the assumptions. But with the Attachment B, on the right side, you'll see, well, on the left, you'll see the department that it's from and the fund. And then, over here, it will list what type of expenditure it's really hidden. So, it's going to be contractual services, materials and supplies, capital outlay. There is a couple of things on here that are debt-related as well, which would be the fire department and a new fire engine and a ladder truck. So, just so that you can then cross-reference to know where those are within the plan. So, those are built in to make this recovery plan, and the numbers on page, starting on page 10. The other big assumptions are health insurance. It's based on the cost that we know for this year. They are actually in an agreement that will not see an increase to premiums for two years, and that's what we have stated here in the assumptions. For past that two year, it is unknown what the health insurance could increase to. It is being used at 15%, as we have done in the past in the last update, as a estimate for now of what could potentially be seen in those years. Other big things, we talked about the capital plan, starting on page 6 with the assumptions.
So, I can ask a question about healthcare?
Yes.
Sorry.
Out the what?
The health insurance?
Oh, yeah.
So, for 19, is it larger than 18?
No.
So, 18 and 19 is the same?
19 came in lower than expected. It was not at the 15% that we had originally expected for the recovery plan.
Okay.
That was in March. So, it was a much smaller increase than we originally had thought.
Okay.
Wasn't it 25%?
Yeah, I'm looking back at last year's.
So, that was from 17 to 18 because of...
So, in 18, it went up 25%?
Correct.
And then, we...
19, it did not.
Yeah, and then, we assumed it was going to be 15% going forward.
Correct.
So...
It was less than 15, or?
Yes.
Bit out, and there was a new company.
Yes.
It was actually bidders this time, instead of just one.
Yeah.
So, we had an option, we had choices.
Do we know where it came in, like, is it 8%? 10%?
I don't remember.
Do we have that number?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Okay.
But it was smaller than the 15.
So, we think 18 and 19 would be roughly this, is that what we're saying?
Well, we, when we built in the cost, we did it at the invoice amount that they were seeing. Plus, you have people will change. There were options within the plan as well, to opt up, to have the base, and then, you could have changes for family to single to, all that was included in the calculation. So, we looked at actually with invoices, or with the new plan for 2019, and built the cost in with that. With that comparison, I did not look at that, so we would have, I'd have to go back and look, to be honest. But the 19 is based upon what they're paying and where people fell and what plan that they wanted.
Okay.
Can we include our insurance rep in that development of that number, that assumption? To say, is this reasonable?
We took it off the invoice, the current invoice.
I know, but did we happen to ask our rep, hey, we're thinking of budgeting this number? Do you have any thoughts or opinions on if that's accurate, if it's not accurate, if we're going down the right path, so on and so forth?
Our rep is involved in all of these meetings and all of these discussions, every time.
Okay, so, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Page 6, hit some of the highlights again. The retirees' health insurance cost, Adonis talked about that before. If you look on page 15, under non-departmental, you'll see the retiree healthcare and the C9 trust only for 2019. That program will be disengaged. This is the leftover payouts from that going forward. You shouldn't see those in other years. And then, you'll see the retiree benefit program, which was the new version that was approved by council, and they went through the application process. And those estimates there are based upon the approval of those applicants and the costs. cost. So that's another change.
I'll talk about that in my report.
Yes. And then, um, another thing with the health insurance, uh, it is intent that it's a recovery plan item, that they would, the employees, starting in 2019, would pay two to five point five percent based on their coverage selected by the employee, the employee would pay a portion of it. That's for 2019 and 2020. That's, the numbers are on page sixteen. Uh, the intent for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three is fifteen percent based on the estimated premium increase. So the increase that was, uh, placed in the top numbers on actual cost and forecasted is also built down into the recovery plan item for the portion to be paid back by the employees, though they would equal out.
So the city's gonna pay eighty-five percent of twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three's premiums?
Correct.
Announced this number on page sixteen?
Yes. That's the recovery plan item. All right, and then...
Can I correct that or something? I'm not so sure the city's gonna be paying. Right now, we're paying it all, and there's been no, uh, progress, uh, for any of them to pay anything. It's just, there's been total resistance to it. Their forms have been sent out and requests them to sign, they say they're not signing it. It's in violation of the contract. So it's basically up in the air. There's nothing for sure at this point. Am I, I, I think I'm correct in saying that. So the idea of them signing something or willingly going along with this is, is not happened yet, the information that I've been told.
Is that all employees or just police and fire or...
Yes. Yes, I mean, well, it's...
Or do we put them all in the same bucket?
Well, they're, yeah, you can't, you know...
Well, you have, some people are non, we've talked about this before, some people, I don't think, have contracts and other people have contracts.
This would be, yeah, so the, the estimate here would be for all employees across the board, whether they're in a union contract or not.
So if the police and fire negotiate a different percentage, then this, these budget numbers would change?
Correct.
Okay.
At this time, this is the intent.
Is it, is it, I guess, for lack of a better word, wise to make assumptions that we don't know if are gonna occur or not?
That's the point of a forecast.
Right, but if, if he's telling me they haven't approved it and we haven't done it before...
But that's what they're working towards.
Does that mean they're gonna get there, though?
No.
That's, that's, my point is, we've never been there before, so this is unventured territory.
Right, we, we had this in the original plan as well. If you look back at the 2018, March recovery plan, that was the recovery plan item there as well, as for intent for city council, uh, and the city's...
With the fifteen percent?
It was fifteen percent for all years, based upon a fifteen percent increase to occur. So the fifteen percent increase to insurance did not occur in 2019, and that's why it's at a two to five point five percent payback by the employees on their share, starting in 2019 and 2020.
Right, are we talking premium increases or are we talking employees' portion?
Premium increases, and they pay a portion of the premium.
I think the answer's both.
So we're forecasting fifteen percent and the employees are also paying fifteen percent?
That was the idea. In twenty...
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two and twenty-three.
Okay, just happens they're the same percentage?
Yeah.
Right.
In March of 2018, that was our assumption.
Okay, okay. That, that clears it up.
I'll be able to address some of that in, in my remarks, to where we stand and where we're going.
Okay.
What's this equate to in savings?
This is a...
If we were to get this, if we were to change it...
Page sixteen, that recovery plan items, review of current employee health insurance.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That is the, uh, projected savings. Yeah, that's based on what we know today and what, uh, and what plan options that they have taken.
Okay.
So as employees change and their selection of plan changes, that number, and that's why we have an annual update.
Okay.
So this, on page sixteen, this review of current employee health insurance is all those variables added up for a net savings of X.
Correct, for that year.
Yeah.
Any other questions on health insurance? Okay, um...
Yeah, I, I guess, just going back to that, sorry. It, it seems to be escalating quickly over the next five years. What, um, maybe I'm missing it, what's, what's, uh, driving that, like from 2020 to 2021? Is that mostly the fact that they're paying two to five percent, uh, and then they're paying fifteen percent? So a lot of that is that ten percent difference?
Correct.
Okay.
So like, yeah, I'm just looking at last year's. So we, in nineteen, we had, you know, reduction of fire personnel, reduction of police personnel. I don't see that in here, so that...
Right. Good question. So with the attachment A, uh, and, and, and working through the union agreements, this is now up into the actual numbers in the top. It is not a recovery plan item, it's built in as this is what they're doing.
Okay.
So the attachment A is showing you what are the funded levels city intends to build into the recovery plan.
Is that kinda when we do this employee headcount, that's in this as well?
Correct.
The recovery plan uses the employee headcount figures.
Correct. For personal services, yes.
Does that headcount follow the contract?
No comment. We're not following that.
Keep going.
Okay. The other thing, if you look at the old one, uh, one of the other recovery plan items that used to be was the movement of street and water fund employees. Uh, that is going to be concluded, instead of being stretched out over several years. Uh, that is all getting moved in 2019. Uh, the city worked with the departments to make sure now all employees are in the correct departments and in the funds that they work in. Uh, so in the street section on page thirteen, and then also the parks and playgrounds on page fourteen, uh, those are those movements of the employees that used to be paid actually in the street and state highway funds, they're also part of the recovery plan. We also moved in 2018, the lighting expenses that used to be paid from the street fund, uh, those have to be paid from the general fund. That is, uh, that was done in 2018 in the, um, street department, and you'll see that that's continuing out for the rest of the years. Again, you asked about, and on assumptions on page seven, the reduction of fire personnel and the reduction of police personnel, that's what, uh, attachment A is showing you, where the funded levels of employees are for this recovery plan. Any other question about the general fund that I did not hit? Is there departments you wanna talk about? You wanna go through more of them? I think the biggest one is page thirteen, the street section, is moving most of those, um, uh, street employees as well as salt and other supplies, materials, and contractual work that was being paid out of the street and state highway into the general fund to free up monies to do actual road projects in the street and state highway funds that are addressed in the capital improvement plan. Is there any other departments you wanna talk about, have questions about?
Uh, the law director, twenty-twenty-two, seems like there's a spike there. I'm guessing that's something specific.
Yes, so outside legal fees that were in non-departmental are now built up into the law director's, uh, department. Uh, that potentially could be the year that they would go back to negotiations if they do a two-year contract.
That's reflective of those, um, non-departmental things that she talked about that are all zeroed out.
Good.
Those amounts that are moved back to the...
Yeah, I just saw the spike in twenty-twenty-two, I didn't know what was driving that. So the contract would go from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two?
Potentially. They could go three years, they could go two, so...
And, um, since we're on page eleven, on the treasures, earnings tax, that contractual service there is where the movement comes of the...
Refunds and incentives, yes.
Okay.
So I do have a question about, uh, police crime control.
Okay.
There's a...
Page twelve, sir.
Uh, page twelve. Forecast for nineteen, the forecast for twenty is three, almost four, uh, maybe three-six, three hundred sixty thousand dollars less than the forecast for nineteen. But when I look at personnel, the numbers are the same.
Correct, so, uh, there is, in the assumptions, I did not hit that, so that's my bad. On the assumptions on page five, uh, there is separation pay is also included in the police and the fire departments, so there's a larger separation estimate for 2019 than there is in 2020.
And that's included in personal services?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
And the large increase from 2018 to 2019 is they were not at their funded levels that were approved in the recovery plan. In 2018, they were still low in numbers, and, and then in 2019 is to get them to the funded numbers in the attachment.
Do we have a number for eighteen personnel in eighteen?
I, I know it was below forty-five.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know off the top of my head.
Got it.
And it was up and down throughout the year, actually, and they had hired personnel during eighteen, but still lost some.
Sure. Okay.
In addition to that, if I may, we have a test scheduled, uh, for the police department, and I'm not sure of my number, but I understand there's forty-five or forty-seven, uh, signed up to take the test, so we will be giving that test here shortly in the next few days.
Because we're understaffed?
Yes, we, well, we, if you want contact, we're really understaffed, but if you go to the plan, it's staffed at forty-five, and we've committed that we would, we're following the plan, so as soon as we have, you know, the test was given and, and, uh, polygraphs, physicals, and all that are done, then, then we'll move the hire as quick as we can.
How many do you think we're...
We're, we're gonna, we're, if we follow the plan, we're gonna follow the plan, so we're at forty-one, I believe, and we'll go to forty-five.
So what's, what's under the contract? How many are we supposed to have for the contract?
Fifty-three or so, yeah.
That's with the chief.
Yeah, with the chief. And I will address, that's the kind of stuff that I'll address in my remarks.
Yeah.
Yeah, the biggest increases from last time to this time is the capital outlay or the contractual material supplies, which are coming from that capital plan.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, they did end in a larger balance than was projected, and that was because of a lot of one-time monies we saw from income tax, the building department, uh, and there was another one. So with the needs that was addressed in that capital plan, that's why those expenditures have increased, if you look at that. And then the movement of bringing those street expenditures into the general fund to then allow for the street fund to recover and the state highway, to then allow for the street projects to be done that are sorely needed within the city.
Sure. So I was curious, like, if we would look back, how much did we project our capital outlays like that would be versus this being like modeled out now? I was curious, have we made progress over these years since we can, we're doing more than we originally thought we would be able to do?
Well, if you look back at the recovery plan last year, there was no capital outlay.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And if you look at this recovery plan now for the actuals and you look back from fifteen forward, there's not been any capital outlay.
Yeah.
And so things, I mean, you guys know, I mean, if you walk out here in this hall hallway on up here, this building, you know, it's leaky front top, there are things now that because there are some funds, we are strongly suggesting that we get these things fixed before, you know, it's, it's cheaper to fix a roof before you have to build a new building, because if we had to build a new building, this community doesn't have enough funds to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, so if you look back, there's not been capital outlay.
Sure.
The police department hasn't had operational vehicles, I mean, I know that was a... So now with this capital plan, they've addressed that, and, yeah, it's a lot of money.
Sure, but we're making progress.
We're making progress, and the other thing that I will add, you know, from Anna Marie and I's perspective as financial supervisor, you know, if some of these things come in, capital outlay items, if they come in under budget, you know, that's gonna be great. We are not going to allow the city to take those additional dollars that were appropriated to capital outlay and then move them for operations. It's just gonna be, we're not gonna spend the rest of that, that's gonna sit. So just that, I wanna make that clear to the commission, too, as financial supervisor, that is one thing we are not gonna permit the city to do. But I think, like Anna Marie said, they worked really hard and done their due diligence to come up with, you know, there are some things we are gonna have to fix and we are gonna have to replace and get these departments, um, some of the capital needs that they need to function.
And our principal savings are the retirement healthcare and, uh, the lower staffing, police, fire primarily.
Correct, and the one-time monies that they saw come into, like the extra income tax that we talked about, that they got, and then the building department was so large, there was a third one, I just can't think off the top of my head. Uh, so, well, we had, the SAFER grant helped reduce stuff, too, but, um, that really played into last year, is those extra monies coming in, so, um, yeah. And again, like I said, we wouldn't let them, you know, they can't come out of this until they address those capital needs anyways. Uh, the other thing is, right now, those are estimates, and once you get into a project, we all know it's either gonna be less or more, uh, so we have to keep, be cognizant of that as we move forward with the capital plan as well.
On these projects, as just kind of a side note, is there a requirement, uh, and maybe it's in the accounting standards or just that we get multiple bids and that these are shopped, uh, shopped with outside parties and things like that?
So there's a higher revised code sections that deal with, uh, certain projects, and if they hit a certain amount, yes, it has to go out to bid, uh, then they have to take the lowest and best based upon the, uh, qualifications they put in for whatever the project is. So then, there's a bid process that has to be open, they have to talk about who is the lowest and best, and if the lowest wasn't the best, why didn't they not select that? Uh, and it's been a while, I think it's around fifty thousand, don't quote me on that, you would have to go and look for the city, uh, but yes, there are, uh, things in the play that requires that in the higher revised code.
Is that, is that handled ultimately or approved by the city council, or who, who authorizes the, the bid acceptance?
They authorize the safety service director to basically enter into and to review those bids, and that's usually where that falls.
On my understanding, is that anything over fifty thousand dollars has to come to council to be approved? Um, and then there is a process, normally if we're purchasing vehicles and stuff, it's usually out of the state bid, um, purchase, so we can, you know, the state has already bid those out.
Right, right.
Um, so that's a savings, but anything like streets or anything that's over fifty thousand dollars has to come to council and be passed by ordinance.
I guess what I'm getting at is I've seen in, in my career...
And then ultimately by you all.
Yeah, um, I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, but there's probably no way, way to say it, is that we don't have our friends and buddies doing these projects, that these are done by, you know, outside legitimate businesses where there's no connection or pat on the back later or anything like that, so that's what it's worth.
We have very few friends and buddies these days.
Well, I might comment.
First of all...
I mean, I've seen it happen with a husband and wife.
I agree.
It, you know, at UC, and it was all...
That would be a pretty serious violation.
Illegitimate. Yeah, but it happens, so, I mean...
But the report on accounting methods also lays out processes, right? Isn't that gonna come under some of that as the policies are revised?
We, we've looked at what, they haven't actually, they haven't been able to do a bidding process in a very, very long time. So we did look at their processes that are in place from, from when they were able to do that, so they do have some things in place, uh, that would meet the higher revised code sections, otherwise we wouldn't have made comments upon it.
One valid point, we have several eyes, there's fourteen that meet every two weeks. There's fourteen eyes that meet every two weeks, and they watch everything, or they question everything, so, but that's not uncommon in, in, in the public one, and we follow it, we check with the law department, we don't sign contracts unless it's approved, we take it right down the line, and with the state in here... And with the state in here, we don't sign anything. We don't do anything unless it runs through the financial supervisor. And we got enough people watching us where it wouldn't make any difference. That's what we're gonna do anyway, so. And I understand your point. I mean, the social media, everybody believes everybody's a crook, but we do, we follow the law director and we follow our financial supervisors.
And don't get me wrong, maybe somebody's brother or uncle is the best contractor and would do the best job. I just wanna make sure that that's, you know, that's looked at and that's, you know, there's some mechanism in place to be able to make sure that happens in a good way, not in a bad way.
I understand that, and I can guarantee you, we go so far as I guarantee you, the street that won't get fixed is mine. That's a promise. It will not get fixed.
It sounds like right now would be the worst time to try and pull something like that off.
I got all I need.
Is there any other questions about the general fund?
I think the real, the real big issue, of course, is the reduction in staffing or the lower staffing levels. And I don't know that that's our position to opine on. But that's, that's the big way we're making things work in this new updated budget.
Correct. So, obviously a lot of rides on the contracts and...
If we can go to the street and state highway, which are page 17 and 18, we talked about the street department and the general fund is going to take on the personnel and the contractual material supplies. So, within these funds that were negative at one time and part of being a fiscal emergency, now that it has become positive and we've moved those out, the intent is now to work on streets that need repair. And that was laid out in the recovery, in the capital project plan in the attachment B. So, that's what's being built into both the street and the state highway funds. Any questions on those? This is a viable plan. It does increase, but it increased expenditures due to needs of the city that really need to be addressed, which were laid out in that extra attachment. But in our estimation, we would not be presenting this unless it was a viable plan.
Point, point me again, if you would, to the, like, where would the fund be for fixing the roof and floor back here?
That would be the general fund.
Capital outlay general fund?
And those are actually addressed in this.
Yeah.
So, oops, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's on, it's under public lands and buildings.
On page three of this, if you go back to the third page, under public lands and buildings is to replace the city hall roof system and repair the water damaged floor and council chambers. We'll see both of those on there.
So, about half a million over five years for public lands and buildings, most of which really looks like the public buildings.
Of that section, yes.
Yeah.
And then there's also under the police department and the fire department, you'll see items for them as well. And that was on the second page, which includes vehicles and other needs.
Yep, okay.
And then the last two pages, I believe, yes, are the street funds.
Have we done, sorry, we keep, we go back to fire, but, you know, we're maintaining 45 employees during the entire window. Have we done like a sensitivity analysis to say, okay, per the new agreement, assuming there is one at some point, that number's 47 or it's 48? How much does it move the needle? And do we have room for that? Or is it, they're always sort of the negative? Have we done that kind of analysis?
Well, if, if you look at the bottom line on page 15, now I've gotten everything all mixed up, sorry. Yeah, or page 16, my bad. You'll see the fund balance at the end of the year with what's been planned for 2019 at $424,000 before the recovery plan item of the employees' portion of healthcare being paid. And then in 2020, you'll see it at $850,000 as well. So, anything that is not already projected in this plan per the assumptions, and we'll just state, like, if employee funded numbers would go up from attachment A, that would directly impact your bottom line.
So, these are overages now, right? So, excess and then...
Correct. Those are positives.
Yep. And that's before the healthcare, okay.
Yes. Well, well, them paying their healthcare.
Right, right.
The increase, yeah, yeah, okay.
And then is there so much that has to be carried over for January? Does that come out of there?
I think that the conversations that we have been privy to are, the city is trying to build up a cash balance enough to cover the payrolls at a minimum for the month of January.
Okay.
Right now, the city does not have a policy on that, but that is something that they are looking into.
I hope we've addressed most of them that you guys had. I know you had this for a while.
Lived with it.
So, the fund balance at the end of the year, what, what kind of perspective can you guys offer on how comfortable that is?
What do you mean by that? What do you mean by comfortable?
I mean...
That's what it will be at a minimum. That would be the minimum fund balance that they would end with.
If everything goes according to...
If everything goes according to...
So, my question is, is that a, what would, what would a healthy ci, what kind of fund balance would a healthy city have?
This city, I would have, I would say enough to cover payroll for the month of January. And I don't know without asking, is it two or three in January? I think we're looking at, you know, trying to get like between a million, 1.5 as carryover.
So...
So, we're not there yet. We've got a lot of cleaning up still to do, but...
So, at the end of 2023, we have half to 33% of what we would ideally want to see in a fund balance?
Before the recovery plan item for the health insurance, yes. If you look at the bottom line after the healthcare with the review of the employees paying a portion, then it would be up to 2.2 million in the last year.
That's, that's the very bottom line on page 16.
Very bottom line. Yes. So, if that goes into place, then, then you're at 2.2, which you would be at the levels that we would like to see for carryover.
Okay.
If, without that, though, you're looking in 2023 at $478,000, which would be below the standard we'd like to see at this time.
Okay.
And a lot of that is due to a lot of the capital needs that needs to be addressed.
Right. And do we, I suppose it's out of our scope, but what is an annual capital expenditure to keep the city up? Is this all recovery and then after that, it'll be less? Or are we gonna level out at half a million or a million or whatever it might be?
I think there's a little bit of both in this, because we've been trying to address the vehicles, and I think that they're starting to do that and coming up with a plan of, okay, we're gonna do this many this year, this many, and this many. So, that's being addressed in here. So, we're recovering but have a plan going forward. There's some other items that is a recovery. And we wanted them to start with a five-year. You can do up to 10 years as well, but, you know, a great start in, in applauding them in the five years. And that was really truly needed to go with the recovery plan. So, you know, going forward, I would really stress to the city to continue to do this capital plan so that you're able to address those needs and then get into the position that we're not recovering, we're planning for the future. Now, anything can happen, and that, that plan can change anytime if something, like, let's say something else, you know, need is now high priority and not medium priority or low priority that it was, they stated on here, then that would need to be moved up and looked at.
Sure.
So, it's not a set in stone plan, but it is a good starting point.
We're just making systemic changes to staffing and benefits and that kind of stuff. And maybe that needs to be done. But to do all that so that we can afford one-time capital expenditures that, and then, you know, however high we are, 2 million or more, and then it falls off dramatically, I don't know, I, it's, I'm just trying to understand. I'd love, I'd, and again, it may be out of scope, but I'd love to understand what ongoing capital outlays for the city of Norwood would be expected to be. I just don't have any...
After we're caught up, kind of thing?
After we're caught up, yeah, after potholes are fixed and roads are paved and roofs are patched or replaced.
Right.
What is a, what would a, what would a normal fund, what would a healthy fund balance look like? And what would a reasonable capital outlay to keep Norwood, you know, well...
And I don't know that we can answer that question at this point either.
Right.
Because things have just deteriorated so much.
Right.
The other thing I wanna point out as far as the capital plan is, we've also been trying to work with the city to move them into a position where they're not having to lease equipment, that they can purchase outright and save that interest expense.
Sure.
And so, that, this plan does take that into account also.
Right, right.
You know, you, you had a good statement. I, I've been in office 16 years. I don't ever remember, we've never had money just to buy things. It's always been lease or, you know, wait till it breaks down. I mean, history's got a city. At last time we were in fiscal emergency, we had wheels falling off of cars, and we had three cops in one car. So, I mean, it's always been that way. My recollection is, I've been told now, that at one time, our earnings tax was 1.7, and they raised it to two with, with the commitment that the money would go into capital improvements. Well, that didn't happen. It wasn't by law. And so, they didn't put it in the capital improvements. You know, the money was coming in, so, you know, you know, it went out. But now, we're in this position where we're catching up. We, you know, it's like letting the house run down. It's run down so far that it takes a long time, and there's infrastructure that we're dealing with that's 100 years old and older, water lines, storm sewer. We've got storm sewer collapses that are causing us problems right now in our residents. And with an old infrastructure like that, you can have a, an item blow up in your face that quick that's $75,000 to $80,000. You could have that a couple times a year.
Sure.
You just, it's hard to predict it. And with an infrastructure, if we lived out, if our city was built out in the boonies, like some of these communities where they took a cornfield and laid all new utilities in there, that, those utilities will last forever. And where in this city, we borrowed money, passed bonds and borrowed money, and it took 15 years to, to pay off a bond to do a street that's gonna last 10 or 12. So, once you get it up, it's got to be, whatever mechanism is there, it has to be designated by law, 'cause that's the only way it'll get done around here, to, you know, because when people come up and say, I need this, I need that, please take care of me, you know, you can't. And, or you do, and then you don't have money. It's a never-ending solution. Somewhere, there's an answer down the road. I'll have a proposal in the next couple of weeks, you know, to increase things. But that's, you know, that's exactly what you're dealing with. I don't know how you can predict it. There are some people that may be able to predict it, but I certainly don't know of them because we don't know what's under the streets.
I think that they have taken a good first step, though, with this capital plan. If they continue to do that, I think then you'll have a better idea of what...
We can be more stabilized.
Yeah.
And then try and do another, take another swipe at it.
Yeah, I think if they would continue this and build upon it every year, I think it would be very beneficial to the city.
Yep.
Any other questions to do something else?
No.
I agree, the capital plan is a major step forward in getting Norwood where they wanna be out of fiscal emergency. Thank you for making that part of this revision this time.
I'll tell you what I really appreciate in this is the effort to actually clean up the funds. And, you know, that was one of my big frustrations early on is it wasn't at all clear to me coming in and looking at it where money was actually coming from. Now, we're burdened by municipal oddities that, you know, a normal company isn't, you know, doesn't have to face. But, but still, it feels to me like the funds are now being used to spend money on what the funds are intended for. And that's, to me, at least, a big comfort and help. So, I know a ton of work went into making that happen, and then I know a ton of work went into making this balanced look forward happen. So, I applaud those involved.
In fairness, the, you know, the finance committee kinda in the past gets vilified for putting those people in those funds, and it kept the lights on, you know? To be honest, it kept the lights on, and it kept the insurance paid, and it kept, you know, employees being paid.
Right, right.
But yeah, you're absolutely right. People are being paid now from funds where they should be paid.
Yeah.
And it's, I know it doesn't seem like much, but it's a huge step forward in really looking at where the city finances are at this point in time. So, you get a real indication of what it costs you to do things.
Any other questions or comments? As you know, pursuant to law, the commission can't make a change here or change there. We say yes to this proposal or we say no. And I'd like to move that we accept this revised financial plan. So, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So, any discussion?
I guess, the discussion, I bet the mayor will speak about it, is, it was raised this morning and, and clear to most of us that the person, the number of personnel in fire and, and police is below the current contract. And there's a process in place that's gonna push this forward, or is intended to push it forward. And I just think that that's a really big deal. Maybe that's just stating the obvious. It's a really big deal, and I'm ready to approve this because the numbers all add up and it works and it's healthy for the city if the services are healthy for the city, right? So, you know, I don't, I don't have any idea whether this level of personnel works or not, but that's what I think, I guess, well, maybe we'll find out. I mean, there's, there's, there's contract negotiations going on, and they, we heard last time that there are a dozen, 15 lawsuits happening underway right now. So, I think there's still an awful lot up in the air. But this, these numbers look like a great step forward.
I agree. And perhaps a step toward removing them from fiscal emergency, and then it can become the city's to decide its own staffing levels.
Right, right.
Okay. You want to call in the role?
Certainly. Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Council President Lake? Yes. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yep.
Mr. Von Dehar?
Yes.
Ms. Bowens?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, we're gonna have to sign this, pass it around for all of you to sign. Perhaps while we're doing that, we can keep moving, 'cause I know we try to keep these meetings to an hour, and we're gonna be a little over today. Mayor, if you wanna give a brief report?
Yes, ma'am. I kinda wanna repeat what I said the last time. I kind of want to repeat what I said the last time. We have a legislative body who, everybody was involved in putting this plan together, and that is the plan. Now, it's up to the city to see this plan. And like was mentioned before, the contracts, what we're dealing with is contracts that are basically evergreen. They go on forever. And the problem we have, that anybody has, is very simply. You have a state statutes, 118 and 4117, and I'm told that both of them conclude with these statutes outweigh any and all other statutes. Yet, on the other hand, the State Employee Relations Board says 118, which is the fiscal emergency, has got no say in this. So, that's what we're dealing with. So, what we have to do is move ahead and get into a position where it's either arbitration or somebody that makes the final, you know, decision, whether it's, whether it's the courts or whoever it is. And we're considering looking at an option that would bypass a lot of it and save time and go to one entity to, to make the decision and get it over with. That way, then we can move on. Because what's going on is, the council comes up with these, the auditors involved in it, financial supervisors, all these numbers are here. If there's the general consensus, like I've told council before, if there's the general consensus that you, you want to follow the contracts or give more out, tell us, and we'll do that. But then, when we come back, the state says, "No, you can't do that. You can't go over." So, it puts us in limbo. The bargaining units likely say, "Well, we've got a contract." Well, that's true. It's an evergreen contract. It never goes away. And so, now we're stuck with, when we hear, "Follow the contract," well, does that mean hire all those people? You know, we get, you know, it gets a little heated, and understandably so. But we're following the direction that we've been told by everybody to go. And if the council or anybody wants to change it, tell us. Give us direction, and we'll change it. We'll follow the direction that we're given because we don't have, nor do I want, the authority to dictate what goes on. We're following the plan. Sometimes it's easy to negotiate, other times, there's no effort whatsoever to cooperate. And we heard, "Why don't you negotiate? Negotiate with what?" Negotiations in the past has been, you give us this, we'll give that. We have nothing to give. If somebody has got a suggestion on what we could give, let us know. We'll give it. Because this goes on and on and on. It's no, it's not pleasant for anybody. And like I said in the message to council, it's tearing the city apart. It's tearing this city apart. Now, I'm going to come up, I've made a suggestion to council, and I'm going to discuss it with them, for a way to possibly increase our revenue. But we can't do that. We can't go and ask for any increase in revenue unless we show that we've reduced somewhat our operating cost. Council is struggling with parks and roads and streets and potholes and potholes and potholes. That's all we hear. And we want this, and we want that, we want this, we want, with what? That's the question. With what? So, that's the position that we're in. And if council, or this commission, or the state wants to change it, tell us. But right now, the state says you do this way. Then the other part of the state says, "No, you can't do that. You got to do it that way. You have to follow 118." A little overdramatic there, but, "You got to follow 118." No, the unions say, "You got to follow 4117." SERB says, "No, you can't do that." That's the, you know, that's, that's the dilemma we find there. Will we keep working at it? Yes. Will we try to expedite it and move into a direction where we get it resolved quickly? Absolutely. Because if the intent is to drag this out, we'll be in the hole. And then what happens? You know, in 118, it says, I hope I don't get into trouble on this, that if we don't follow the plan, or we don't come out of here, the state can come in, and this commission, I think, can invoke, where they cut our monthly expense down to 85% and reduce our budget to 85%, cut off 15%. Now, I don't know what it takes for that. I don't know how close we are to that. And I don't know, depending on how these contracts go, whether we'll come close to that. But that's the dilemma that a statutory city has to face. We have to follow the state law. The state's in here, they've got regulations. I would hope that the state, somebody would talk to somebody else. The Attorney General would talk to the state auditor and talk, and these legislators, instead of worrying about a lot of things, come out and give these, you know, "You've cut our funding, you know, government revenue sharing. You've cut that, and everything else gets cut, and then we're, then tell us what we can and can't do." And yet, when we go in one direction, you say you can't go there. That's, that's the dilemma we're facing. And would we like to honor, you know, well, sure I would. Do I like being the jerk of the city? No, but I got used to it. But it's just the way it goes. Give us the direction, if there's changes from the state, find out these changes, Attorney General. Go up and tell the Attorney General, "Give us some help. Give us some direction on which we have to follow. 118, 4117, or what? Or 124." And that's what I'm hoping, that somehow, out of this mess, that somebody will give these statutory cities some direction on which way they can go, and make it a hell of a lot easier on everybody. Sorry. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Council, report.
I'll just be really brief. The main thing I wanted to talk, to let you know is that the application period for the retirees' health plan is, is completed. It was March the 31st. Per the ordinance in the plan that was adopted, those we didn't hear from right away, got sent second notices and then honest, and then a third notice. So, there were several people who responded only to the third notice. So, that was a nice provision to put in there to kind of remind people that, that that is, that was required. There were a few people who didn't give us social security numbers, so we're in the process of obtaining those, but we're down to like two. And so, I just spoke with the auditor's office. They're getting that information in their computers, and we're not required to have the checks out until May 15th before we pay a penalty, but I think their plan is, if this plan is adopted and then the appropriations ordinance is passed in compliance with this plan, that they'll begin sending out those checks to folks. So, and we do have some money in the financial recovery plan in case, to cover some of the expenses from 2018. To my knowledge, we were not hit with any of those large expenditures where we didn't renew that catastrophic policy. To my knowledge, we haven't, you know, we were lucky, so we didn't, we didn't have those expenditures. So, I think the money that's in the financial recovery plan, looking at the number, should be enough to cover the number of applicants. We're waiting on a couple of legal opinions from the law department on a few other people, but the process is pretty much completed, and want to thank the administrative committee for their work.
Thank you. Next meeting date, we're considering, if you could look at your calendars, is Tuesday, June 18th. That'll give the financial supervisors time to take a look at the May numbers and present them to us. Is that a possibility?
I think that I'm out that week.
You're out that?
Yeah.
Whole week? Would you be available the 25th?
Yes.
That would work a whole lot better for me as well.
Okay.
The 25th.
Is that okay for you? Okay, let's plan on that then, June 25th, and we'll go with 11:30 a.m. We have one person who has signed up to speak, Ronald Murphy. I don't know who that is.
He was on my side.
Oh, okay, yeah, I wondered if he was with you. So, you're, you're Bobby? Okay. Yeah, I knew Bobby had contacted me, so let's start, go ahead with, we'll start with Bobby. Are you the one who wants to speak?
I'm here first.
Okay. If you could come forward, and according to our bylaws, if we, we'll permit this for three minutes, and the comments.
I'm sorry. Can I get my hearing?
Yeah, come on up here so we can hear you. Your comments need to be relevant to the fiscal emergency plan or the declaration.
No problem.
Are, are you able to hear me?
Sure.
Just keep your comments relevant to the fiscal emergency plan or the declaration, and if they can be presented respectfully, and it's all yours. If you could identify yourself.
Okay. My name's Ron Murphy. I'm a police officer with the City of Norwood Police Department. I represent the Norwood Police Wage Benefit Committee. In, in the summer of '17, after the city was put into fiscal emergency, there was a meeting up here among employees and members of the state auditor's office, and there was a very specific question asked, if the plan that was put together by the city could violate SERB contracts. And the answer to that was, no, they have to follow the contracts. So, and we were currently in negotiations with the city at that time. The negotiations didn't go as well as hoped. They had always gone well in the past, but in January of '18, we, we ended up going to fact-finding. In fact-finding, they brought up the number 45. We agreed to give up certain positions, you know, four positions in '18, two positions in '19. But they brought up the number 45 then, and we had never heard it before then. The fact-finder agreed with us, so we, we agreed to be four-position sort in '18, two position sort in '19, and then be back up to our full complement by contract in '20. During the fact-finding negotiations, the actual fact-finder's report, the state auditor's office was brought in as a witness, and they said that the current plan at that time, in January of '18, when, when this was held, met the obligations of the contract. The contract was ratified by Cincinnati City Council, or I'm sorry, Norwood City Council in sometime in, the fact-finder's report came back in February, they voted on the contract by not voting on it. So, it was accepted by them per SERB's rules. Less than a month later, they changed the plan and take our numbers down to 45, to knowingly violate the contract that they just approved a month prior. No negotiations with us. They, they, again, we went to fact-finding, we negotiated positions out of this plan, and then, you know, with the idea we were negotiating in good faith. A month later, a plan is revised, presented to council, voted on, and then ultimately passed by you guys that lowers those numbers to 45. We are more than willing to negotiate. I don't know, just like the mayor said, I don't know what the rules are. We're negotiating, we have a contract, we do our best to help the city anytime we can, we always have. I don't think there's anybody here who would dispute that. We've lowered our numbers years past, things of that nature, always trying to help out. But this can't be legal. It's an end-around. That's, there's no two ways about it. The number 45 didn't come out of thin air in January of '18, presented to the fact-finder, and they show up.
You have about 15 more seconds.
In the plan. What's that?
I just wanted to give you, we're close to three minutes.
Okay. So, that number didn't come out of thin air. This was a plan from the get-go as an end-around to fail to negotiate properly with our union, and that's what they've done, and that's what they've created with this plan. They can say, negotiate, they can throw that word around. They did not negotiate with us. They basically tried to force-feed us what they wanted, where they wanted to get to, and it did not work out well for them. When we were open to negotiation, and we would have helped them, we would have done anything we can. I mean, half of us live in this city.
We're, we're past three minutes, if you could wrap it up.
Can I request a, an extension, Tom?
No, I'm sorry. We are way over our time.
Really?
Right now, yeah.
Been going on for two and a half years, and I can't get three more minutes?
We'll be meeting again in June, and we'll be happy to.
All right. Well, that's the point of the union is, is that when you hear the term negotiation, just know that there was one party negotiating in good faith.
Okay.
The other party was going, again, doing end-around behind closed doors, setting these numbers in place that knew they would violate the contract.
Officer Murphy.
Going to the Civil Service Commission and knowingly removing positions that are in this plan that violate the contract.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Like to ask Bobby Schlechter, am I saying that right?
Schlochter.
Schlochter, and he's with firefighters, and same ground rules. We have three minutes for, for comments.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, my name is Bobby Schlochter, president of firefighters' union. Basically, want to reiterate, reiterate what Ron was saying. We've gone through the same process. We had a contract, we had certain staffing numbers in there. City came back and did not follow that contract after they just recently agreed to it. Right now, we're also in negotiations, and I believe what Ron said is absolutely correct. The city is using this FRP as an end-around to not negotiate with us. This is a safety issue for us. Our staffing levels are very much, very important to us. It's a safety issue to the city, to our citizens. I believe like Mr. Shepard asked, who came up with these numbers? We don't know where the number 45 came from for the fire department. I have no idea. The city did hire an independent consultant to do a report on the fire department. It is definitely not the 45 number. His number was higher than that. His minimum staffing number was higher than what we're at now. So, if you want to ask where these numbers come from and why they should be in this plan, let's look at the city's independent consultant, see whether his numbers say. We also have another report, a study done through our IFF, which will clearly show that the number 45 does not work for this city. Like I said, I just want to reiterate what Ron said. This is illegal. This is an end-around of our negotiations, and I was hoping to speak before you guys got a chance to vote on it because this is unsafe for our citizens. It's unsafe for our firefighters and unsafe for our citizens, and that's our most important goal. And we are always open and willing to negotiate with the city, just as the police officers are, and we're willing to sit down and work something out, but as of now, there is no negotiation because they haven't presented anything to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's all I had, sign-ups.
Can I say one more thing?
Briefly.
Briefly.
Ever so briefly.
Right, okay. I just want to say, I guess, following that up, I mean, if, if you're negotiating, then, or you're supposed to negotiate, then negotiate, obviously with the limitations of the plan that's in place. Makes no sense to have a contract that has unreachable levels to it. So, I would invite both parties to get together, talk, stay in the same room as long as you have to, hammer it out, and make sure it works both with the plan and the contract reflects that and they're in unison versus just being a part. Otherwise, this is going to go on in perpetuity, and I don't see a solution unless, unless there's real negotiations. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Anybody else? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Ron?
No.
Second?
Sorry. Who made the motion?
Lauren. Ron to Lauren, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.